We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Weber County Commission meeting dated July 2, 2019. We welcome you all here today. It's good to see you all. Well, I always like it when we have a crowd here and people get a chance to come and be part of our commission and part of Weber County government. We will start today by having an invocation by Christopher Crockett, Pledge of Allegiance by Stacy Skeen, and a Thought of the Day by Commissioner Jenkins. We'll go to that point. Christopher?
Our kind Father in Heaven, we bow our heads in prayer before Thee to offer up our gratitude for the many blessings which Thou hast bestowed upon us. We are grateful to live in this beautiful county and to serve its residents. We are grateful to be a part of this nation and as we celebrate this, our country's independence, we ask that Thou please help remind us of all the many sacrifices that those who have gone before us have made so that we may enjoy the freedoms that we do. Father, we ask that Thou bless us with wisdom, that we may be able to make decisions to improve the lives of those who live here and who are just around us. We love Thee, Father, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Well, my turn to give the Thought of the Day.
Thought of the Day.
So last week, I had a chance to go down to the USIP Conference. And of all places, they held it at a little resort right outside of Capitol Reef in Torrey, Utah. Well, you could ask a hundred people going down the road where Torrey, Utah is, and you might find one that could give you a direction to Torrey, Utah. It's out in the middle of nowhere. But it's not too far from Bryce Canyon, and it's right next to Capitol Reef. And after spending a few days down there, I just can't help but be awed by the, our national parks that we have here in the state of Utah. We have just got some fabulous national parks. And if you are not spending a little bit of time in our national parks, you are wasting your time in the state of Utah, as far as I'm concerned. We have the Mighty Five and now the Mighty Six with the new one up in Box Elder County. But I'm telling you, you go down there and look at the erosion that's taken place and the rivers that are there, and it's just beyond belief. And you talk about hard to get to some of these. Well, I took my grandkids down there three weeks ago, a couple of weeks prior to this for Grandpa's Great Adventure. And I had a sore foot, so I wanted to make sure I didn't go too far. And we entered some slot canyons that were off the chart. They were two miles deep, and they were within 100 yards of the trailhead. And they were exciting, and the kids were overwhelmed by them and the beauty and all forms. Said, "Grandpa, thanks for taking me. This was great." And it's just a lot of fun, and it doesn't take that much effort to do it. And I'm telling you, it was a lot of fun we had down there. And so this time of year, right now, it's when we need to get out and enjoy what we're doing, not only with our national parks, but the holidays are here, the Fourth and the 24th coming up. There's a lot to do. All the communities are having their parades right now. You two were just in a parade up in Huntsville. And this next week, all the other towns are having their parades, and then it's only a few more weeks, and the rodeo's going, and the 24th of July, and our Pioneer Days. There's just a lot happening. Then the week after that is the County Fair. Right now's a good time to stay around the county and recreate. Todd Fiario was telling us this morning that the county's parks are chuck full, just busting at the seam. And of course, we had a chance to go up there and eat lunch in that lodge he's restored at the Weaver Memorial Park. And so anyway, that's my Thought of the Day. Get out and recreate and stay in the county. It's a good time to do it.
Good.
Very good. Well, we have a lot going today, not a terribly packed agenda, but there's stuff that's important. So any of you who have come to comment to the commission, and it's not on the public comment, or under the, we're going to hold a public hearing. Thank you. I'm getting a little old. The brain don't work quite as fast. Anyway, if you're not here specifically for the public hearing, but you do want to comment to the commission, now's the time. We would be glad to have you step to the lectern here and make your presentation to us. Okay? I don't see anybody jumping up. I'm kind of looking at everybody. So we'll go to the first items on our agenda today, Items F, or consent items. The warrants today are number 1851 through 1857 and 440, 590 through 440795 for $826,956. Purchase orders are $76,516. Approval of the minutes from the June 28, or 18th and 25th meetings. Requests to ratify new beer licenses. Requests for approval of severance agreement binding between Weber County and Rhonda Kippen. Requests for approval of retirement agreement between Weber County and Alicia Reezy. Request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Gilmore Bale to review the use of the 2013 and 2018 Geo Library Construction Bonds for compliance with approval to appropriate post-insurance requirement. So we're getting ready to close that bond out, and that's what that's to do with, is that bond. So in that, I went through the purchase orders and payments this month and posted my chin there. Ricky, do you want to go through those?
Love to. You bet. We issued 18 purchase orders this week for $77,000. A third of that amount, or $26,000, was for our IT department. That will go towards buying some network switches and upgrades. 21% or $16,000 is for the Golden Spike, and that's primarily shavings for stalls, but there is also buying some banners and signs and decorations for the upcoming fair. 15% or $12,000 is for the Ogden-Eckles Conference Center, and that was almost exclusively for food. 14% or $11,000 for the jail, and that was primarily to buy 100 mattresses and then some clothing as well. We issued 211 checks this week for $827,000. 18% of that amount, or $150,000, is for the jail. That purchased food, medical supplies, and services, as well as paying utilities. 17% or $141,000 is transportation tax dollars. It was a reimbursement mostly to Harrisville for the work on 1100 North, but there was also some money spent on 12th Street. 12% or $101,000 is for the sports shooting complex, and that is to pay for some of the baffles that have been installed there. 8% or $65,000 is for the Health Department, primarily for vaccines. And then 6% or $47,000 is the distribution of RAMP awards. Ogden City was the largest recipient this week, but there were four other entities that received RAMP awards this week.
Questions, Commissioners? The only thing I seen in there that I questioned was $100,000 to the shooting complex, but that was for baffling in there. We knew about that.
Yeah, we talked about that.
All right. If that's the case, I'd sure entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Consent Items. Mr. Chair?
Second. Very good. I have a motion in second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's unanimous. Action items. Request for approval, this is G1, of a resolution of the Weber County Commission of Weber County appointing a trustee to the governing board of Little Mountain Service Area.
Good morning.
Stacy Skeen, good morning.
Good morning.
I received notice to post for the Little Mountain Service Area District. I posted it according to state statute and received one application from Kent Bradford. He has been serving, and he submitted an application for renewal. So if appointed, his term would expire December 31st of 2022.
So we have a hard time getting members on that because there's very little out there. And if you notice, I'm on there now. They put me on because we couldn't get somebody last time. So I'm pleased that Kent has decided to re-up. They only meet about quarterly. It's not often that they meet. There's just not much going on there. Questions?
So my understanding is he's been on the board in the past. He understands the commitment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a proper role for, put him back on.
My other two questions have to do with, Mr. Chair?
Uh huh. Go ahead.
Have to do with the names, two names on there whose terms expire December 31st, 2018.
So Lance Wood, he has expired in 2018, and so did Doug Larson. So the plan is for, to reappoint Kent Bradford, and then the board will have a meeting, and they'll probably vote to reduce the size of the board so that there will be five members. And then Lance Wood will just continue to serve as he's been serving because he's not eligible, but he can continue to serve until his appointment is filled. So he'll just continue in that role. His role's critical, I guess, on that board.
It is.
Being part of the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District.
It is, sure.
General Manager.
Senator Stewart.
Yeah.
Yeah? All right.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready to accept a motion for a resolution.
Okay, with resolution?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 44 for the, between Weber County and the Little Mountain Service Area.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have motion second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Stace. All right. Item number two is approval of a resolution of Weber County appointing a member to the Weber County Audit Committee. Mr. Crockett?
Good morning, Commissioners. There is a current vacancy on the Weber County Audit Committee. Ryan Child previously served in that position, but his term has expired, and so we need to fill that vacancy. The committee consists of seven members. Six of those members make a various, represent the departments and various elected officials in the county, but there is one position for a rotating committee member that is appointed on a two-year term. The committee recommends to the commission for approval Heather Christopherson. Ms. Christopherson is currently a CPA with Ulrich and Associates. She received her undergraduate degree from the University of Montana and then a master's of accountancy from Weber State University in 2002. She has experience in audits of governmental and nonprofit entities. The committee met Ms. Christopherson at its last meeting. She sat in and observed. We were able to get to know her, very qualified. So the committee unanimously recommended that she be appointed to fill this position.
Questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 45 to appoint Heather Christopherson to the Weber County Audit Committee.
I'd second that.
We're going to have motion second.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
And it's unanimous. G3, under action items. Request for approval contract binding between Weber County and Utah Engineering for installation of a new ventilation system at the Golden Spike Event Center. Duncan Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Really excited to present this one. We've gone through the procurement process, worked really closely with Jason and as well as Chris to make sure we followed all the right procedures. Utah Engineering won the bid. We're hoping to have a lot of this taken care of before the fair, so that way the Golden Spike isn't a sauna.
I appreciate that. I ate lunch in there multiple times last year to get into the shade, and it was just like walking into an oven to eat lunch.
Yeah, we're hoping that this will really help. We're going to have several big fans that will help circulate, as well as louvers and dampers to help bring in and start us at a colder temperature rather than starting out at 80, 90 degrees. We'll be starting at 70, you know, and that'll take us a while to get up to those higher temperatures.
What are those fans called?
Big ass fans.
There you go. Just for the record.
Just for the record.
All right.
That's the licensed name of the?
Licensed name. They are large in size, though, as well.
Commissioners, any questions?
So Duncan, it looks like the cost I saw somewhere was about $108,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's complete installation material?
Yeah, that's the whole project, start to finish. They'll go in and they'll take off parts of the roof, and so they have to do some structure stuff, as well as when they hang the big ass fans, they're going to have to have a lot of load-bearing stuff with them, too.
How many fans?
I believe we're doing four.
Those are big ass fans.
They are.
In a big arena.
Big arena. No, that's going to be nice. I think, as Commissioner Jenkins said, make that a little more usable building come July, August, and first part of September.
Yeah, it really goes offline for two, three months out of the year, depending on the weather. And so this will give us an opportunity to really sell it in those slower times because, you know, we're really busy during the winter months because it's cold outside, but when it gets hot outside, people want a place to come in inside and be a little cooler for their horses and stuff as well.
Well, right, last year, our temperature was right at 98, 99. I'm not sure we ever had 100, but it was real close to 100.
I think we broke 100 a couple of times. You go on the food court with that cement, it was 110.
Boy, it's hot, it's tough. You bet. All right, Commissioners, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the contract binding between Weber County and Utah Engineering to install and set up for a new ventilation system inside the Golden Spike Arena.
Great. Second? I have motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you, Duncan. We appreciate that. We appreciate you getting ready for this. Next is request for consideration and action on a request for a final approval of the Uintview Estate subdivision and associated subdivision improvements. Tammy?
Ada Lott.
Ada Lott.
Yes, sir. Morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good morning, Tam.
Good. Along with this, request for approval for the subdivision is acceptance of a road dedication in here. We've got a cul-de-sac going in, and it'll be named 2275 East Street. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions, Commissioner?
No, I don't have any questions. This has been a long time coming, but it's, glad to see it come to fruition. It'll be a beautiful improvement to the area.
It will. It will. We're excited. There's going to be a walking path that will provide a pedestrian connection as well through there, so.
Good. Well, this is appropriate. Very good. I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve and take action for final approval of the Uintview Estate subdivision, associated subdivision improvement agreement.
Second?
Good. I have motion in second on G4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Tammy. Item five, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Wardell Brothers Construction for Skyline Drive Pothole Repair. Jared Anderson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Good to see you, Jared.
Good to see you. If you remember and have recognized over the past several months, I think it started early winter, we had a snowpaw driver call us up and say, "Hey, this road's really pumping up here." And it was a small section of road, maybe 100 feet, but there was two big areas where the appearance was water had gotten underneath that roadway. We didn't know how, but we needed it fixed as soon as possible. Worked closely with Jason Horn and procurement and figured out what we needed to do to just turn and get a contractor out there, got Wardell Brothers out there, opened up the road, and got this water issue that was out there taken care of. There's an underground trench and some water's getting into there, so we were able to collect that water and put it into our storm drain. So it was a much-needed project, happened pretty quick, not quite done yet with it. They needed to come out immediately. We're getting the contract before you now. If you have any questions, let me know.
Questions, Commissioners?
You know, I met with Jared on this, since this is out our way, and had some concerns with regard to why the road deteriorated so closely after it was installed. And evidently, there was a unique drain situation made out of gravel that required, and it was buried. The connection with the contractor was never come up, so we'll have some questions this after. But this at least takes care of that problem and shouldn't happen again. You know, we shouldn't have any more problems, but it keeps that skyline drive that's being used quite frequently open, and glad to see him get done with this.
Very good. All right, Jared, that answered everything. How about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the contract between Weber County and Wardell Brothers Construction for Skyline Drive Pothole Repair.
Second? I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Unanimous. Thank you, sir. Next up's item six. Approve of a change order on the Saunders Construction Contract for the Ogden Valley Branch Site and Utility Improvement at the Library. Linda Wayne's Garden. Linda, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you.
Good. Thank you for coming.
Change order number two follows on the heels of change order number one, which really established Saunders Construction as CMGC Contact Manager, General Contractor for Improvements at Ogden Valley Branch. Change order number one called out a scope for them to detail costs and help us with value engineering on projects at Ogden Valley. They've completed a major portion of that work now, and change order number two that you see before you today is authorizing them to go ahead with interior work at the Ogden Valley Branch that has been costed and reviewed by the architect and the library staff. There will be some additional change orders coming as they continue to cost things out, but this is the major portion of everything the contractor will do on the interior.
Commissioners, any questions? No? We're aware of this.
Yeah, I just have so much. I appreciate that, Linda, and trust your decision-making and how you've gone about going through this process. I have tremendous confidence in what you've done. Thank you.
How about a motion, Commissioner?
With that, I'll make the motion that we approve the change order on the Saunders Construction Contract binding between Weber County or the Ogden Valley Branch Site.
And I'm going to second that, Linda. I also would agree that this is going to be significant improvements to the Ogden Valley Branch. You've got the contractors working. They were actually up there over Saturday when Commissioner Harvey and I were in the parade. They were out there, you know, doing some construction on the front, so it looks like they're motivated to complete this project on time.
Yeah, they're on the fast pace.
Yeah, good. So I think it's a great improvement for the valley and for the library system.
I agree.
Great. So I have motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Item seven, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Advanced Paving for Asphalt Sealing and Repair at the Ogden Valley Branch, Southwest Branch, and Pleasant Valley Branch. Linda, back to you.
All right, Commissioners. This is, as you've noted in your introduction, an agreement to primarily seal and stripe existing parking areas, but also to remove some pavement in front of the Ogden Valley Branch. When you were up there, you saw that much of the front entrance area is being removed with that septic system upgrade. That has been undermined by the pavement that is out in front that's original to the facility, 25 years old. So in that particular area, they're going to remove the asphalt, replace it, and then seal and stripe it. Two of these projects, the Ogden Valley Branch and the Southwest Branch, are coming out of Phase II funding. The Pleasant Valley Branch will come out of our operating bench funding.
Questions?
No questions.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Advanced Paving for the asphalt sealing and repair of the Ogden Valley Branch, Southwest Branch, and the Pleasant Valley Branch.
Second?
I have motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We appreciate your efforts and what you do. Item eight, approval of a cooperative agreement binding between Weber County and the state of Utah Division of Parks and Recreation regarding boating law enforcement at the Pineview Reservoir. Brandon Roundy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you? So this is fitting for your Thought of the Day, keeping our recreation areas, enjoying them, and keeping them safe. This is a renewal of a cooperative agreement between the Utah State Division of Parks and Recreation and Weber County through the Sheriff's Office. It's a joint effort to plan, develop, and manage boating enforcement, safety laws, and rules at the Pineview Reservoir. The Sheriff's Office provides the deputies and personnel to staff those boats, as well as some training, and then we investigate all the accidents and report to the state all of our contacts and enforcement and activities with the state. In that agreement, the state agrees to provide us with the boats and all the equipment, the operating costs, and the fuels for those boats, as well as training and inspections. And then they also provide some assistance for, if we have anticipation of loud crowds up there, they can provide some personnel. It's for five years, with a renewal at the end of the five years, and then we can terminate it in 90 days. Do you have any questions on this agreement?
Questions, Commissioners? That's a good deal.
No, I think it's a good thing. And we met with the sheriff yesterday, and he mentioned to us that he's engaged the Weber County Sheriff's Posse to do some patrolling, citizens' patrolling, both on Cozy and Pineview, which I think is a great step, to have that personal contact, to engage these people, members of the public that would really like to serve. It really gives them a purpose that they haven't had for a few years, so I just applaud what the sheriff and you folks are doing out there. We're seeing some great progress in the Sheriff's Department that we haven't seen for a number of years.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that's part of our VIPS program. We're getting the public involved with the safety of the areas that they enjoy. And we also have had approved to have ATVs side-by-side on the beach for deputies to patrol, actually, the beach area, so.
And I just think, you know, we understand how crowded that can be. You know, if you don't believe me, come up Friday or Saturday or Sunday to Pineview, you'll see the crowds. And the more personal interaction we can have with members of the public, not just police officers, I think is a positive thing with the public because it shows that we really do have a concern other than just law enforcement. So we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great. How about a motion?
So with that, I'd move to approve the cooperative agreement between Weber County and the state of Utah Division of Parks and Recreation regarding boating law enforcement at Pineview Reservoir.
Second? Very good. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Randy?
Round.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Item number nine, request for approval of interlocal agreement binding between Weber County and Brigham City related to the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition Executive Director, Brayden Felix.
Good morning.
How are you, Brayden?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Go ahead.
This is another one of the interlocal agreements for the Golden Spike Stormwater
This is another one of the interlocal agreements for the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition between Weber County and this one's with Brigham City. If you have any questions, I'd love to entertain them.
Is this your last one?
Nope, we still have another coming from UDOT Ogden and from Weber State.
I thought we were getting him.
Well, I did too. Here we are, well, we're getting close.
We're getting, we're getting close. We're getting very close, but we still just have a couple more to tie down. I have email confirmations from those agencies, though.
Wonderful. With that, Mr. Chair, if you're ready, I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement buying between Weber County and Brigham City relating to the Ogden or the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition, a resolution number 46.
Second?
Very good, we have a motion in second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forrester?
Aye.
Senator Jenkins?
Aye. Very good, that's been approved. Thanks, Brayden.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Next item is H, public hearing. This public hearing is for consideration and action on a request for the First Amendment to the Powder Mountain rezoning agreement. So with that, I'd be glad to accept a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene in a public hearing. So move?
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in a public hearing. With that, we'll turn the time over to Steve Burton to explain the details of this. Steve?
Point of information?
Yes.
To go to a public hearing from a public meeting, Fatima, is that a roll call vote? What am I thinking of there?
Closed session.
Closed session, thank you.
Very good. Steve?
Says you're aware the county has a development agreement with Summit Mountain Holding Group that we originally entered into with them a few years back so that they are able to keep their resort zoning up on the mountain there. As development happens, the developer sees a need to amend the development agreement. And in this case, the amendments are fairly minor. We've reviewed these with our legal team as well as John Bond and Sean Wilkinson. And we've gone over all these for the last year or so, all these changes. And so this also has been before the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. It was on June 27th of last year and they recommended approval of these changes. Since it is a public hearing and I don't think you often get the chance to interact with SNHG, would it be okay if they may be presented to you the changes that they're proposing?
Absolutely.
I'll let them explain to you.
More than appropriate.
Morning Commissioners, Ann Winston on behalf of Summit Mountain Holding Group. There's a broad range of issues that we're addressing in this amendment, so I don't want to bore you with things that are unnecessary or ministerial. So if you have specific questions on some of these issues, I'd be happy to field those first or I can give you a little bit of a background on how we got here.
Why don't you go ahead and give us that background?
Okay, so the genesis of this amendment actually came from staff. And we've been trying to get this finalized for well over a year now. The initial issue came up because there were two issues in the existing zoning and development agreement in which we were out of compliance. One was the wildfire prevention plan or mitigation plan and the other was the trails network. So the original ZDA had Page 45, which was a map of the trails that we were initially committed to construct on the, at the mountain. And it had two regional connector trails that proved to be not feasible. And if you have specific questions on those trails, Mark Trottel is here and he can answer very, much more specifically on what the challenges were with those trails. So we found that it wasn't feasible to construct them and so we worked with the county and some other stakeholders and we came up with a revised map of the trails. So there are more recreational trails at the top of the mountain and the regional connector trails were removed from that. And so we also added in a requirement that we do, every two years, we do a recreation facilities plan that we submit to the county and the county reviews. So we added a requirement that as part of that plan, we'll continue to reevaluate the feasibility of putting in the regional connector trails, which is very steep and it's not really feasible for people to use them as a regional connector. Nobody will use them for that purpose. They'll use them maybe for, you know, for hiking and recreating, but not as a, you know, transportation or access point. So that was the, that was the kind of the main point of why this amendment was requested in the first place. The other was the wildfire management plan. It had a date, I don't remember what the date requirement was for completion, but it had passed and we were out of compliance. So this proposed amendment changed the date to actually Sunday, June 30th. And we've completed that wildfire protection or mitigation plan. So as we were opening up the ZDA to address these two issues, we looked at the workability of the document and there were other things that just came up over the course of time that were either not, the language didn't work great or, you know, between the developer and staff, we found there were just some changes that needed to be made. The other issue that came up was with respect to the assessment bond reserve fund. There's, there are four reserve funds that were established in the assessment bond, one of which is referred to as the development funded reserve account. And that account is to be funded on the 51st building, start to be funded when the 51st building permit was pulled on the project. So the county had raised that issue, we had discussed it, we couldn't figure out where that language was because it wasn't in any of our agreements with the county. Well, it turned out that it was in the original ZDA, there was an original ZDA with Western American Holdings that was then amended when Summit Mountain Holding Group acquired the project. And there was a paragraph in there. Then that document was then superseded when we did the new ZDA, but that paragraph was never carried over. So that paragraph was carried over to this document and it just establishes the language. It's pretty similar to what was in the original ZDA, but John added some mechanics to it that benefit the county and that we've agreed to. And so that's carried over. So there's a lot of other things in the ZDA. If you have specific questions on them, I'm happy to answer, but I hope that kind of gives you a bit of a background.
So we as Commissioners sat down with Steve yesterday and went over this document so we'd understand it. So we've had the benefit that other members of the audience haven't had because we were able to spend time on it yesterday. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
We did, I think we were pretty comprehensive yesterday on our work session.
Yeah, I think that that explained a couple of issues I had. I would like Mr. Bond to come up and talk about the one provision dealing with the bond, though, if you wouldn't mind when the presenter is concluded with her remarks. I just want to make sure we're totally clear on that with the bond payments and maybe give us a little picture, better picture where we stand currently with regards to that. Mr. Bond, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, and if you have specific questions on the language that's in there, it's the reserve account is, it's to be funded $6,000 on each building permit that's issued from the 51st building permit until the total funds in the reserve account are equal $720,000. So it's funded over time. The way the language was in the prior ZDA, the county was to issue an invoice to Summit and Summit was to pay the trustee directly for the, you know, the $6,000 as it came due. The revisions that John had suggested make it a condition to the building permits being issued that the developer pay the county directly and then the county will remit those funds to the trustee. So that procedure benefits the county because there's no chance that the building permits will be issued before the funds are actually delivered to the county and the county's in control of the funds.
How close to the 51st permit are you?
Close, but it'll be next, you know, the next building season, I think. I mean, Steve, do you have a?
Yeah, okay.
I don't, Rhonda was keeping a schedule of it, so I don't have the latest numbers, but it should be next building season.
Right. All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that. John, do you want to answer Commissioner Forrester's question? Did you understand it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Just as context, as this process evolved between the county and Summit, it's beginning back in 2013, there were certain concerns that we had as far as risk and reducing risk in this process. We, the element we're talking about today is the third part of that risk reduction on the financial side of it. The first one was to have Summit put the equivalent of a year's bond payment in a reserve account at the bank, which they did, it's about a million five. We also added another million five onto the bond itself as a second reserve element. So that million five was also given to the trustee, Zion's Bank. So currently at Zion's Bank, there are two years of bond payments in reserve as a way to reduce the risk for the community, for the public, because the Commissioners at that time, in a sense, co-signed on this bond, saying that if Summit did not pay their annual assessment on July 15th, that the county's citizens would be responsible to make that payment. That was a significant risk that was there and evident. And so we made those first two requests that we have two years of bond payments in reserve with the trustee. The third, the third one which we're talking about today is the equivalent of a half a year's bond payment or $720,000. And as we've discussed over the past few months, felt that it was helpful to the county's risk reduction that any time that a building permit is let out, that each time that goes, there's a $6,000 payment made. And for the next 120 building permits, this will occur. So they'll pay an equivalent 6,000 times 120, which is the $720,000. That then will create a third reserve amount with the trustee, the equivalent of a half a year's payment of the bond payment. The bond payments are about the 15, there's about 15 years left on that bond payment currently. And the next payment will be due on July 15th, so it's an annual payment. Does that help frame?
It does. So what do we have in our reserve right now? The 2 million? What do we have in?
We have two annual payments of 1.5, so we have a little over $3 million.
Little over 3 million?
In the, in the account at Zion's Bank, who is the trustee acting for us.
And I'm assuming those are in restricted accounts, so that Summit would not have access to use those for any other reason?
No, I have access.
You have access?
No one else does.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think that's good. I think it's great for the public to understand that we do have some oversight. We're, even today, we're continuing to reduce our risk with that agreement that was put in place a few years ago.
Yeah. As we found, as we find, the more growth that occurs on that mountain, the greater the risk disperses amongst more people instead of Summit. So we welcome them to grow in that sense, that it broadens that risk component to many people instead of Summit. So we, and, yeah, so that, it's just an element of financial risk that I was looking at concerning the county and they've been very helpful and working with us through that process.
I agree. I think, I think this is a good, a good move forward, Commissioners.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Very good, thanks, John. All right, since this is a public hearing, it's now time for any of those in the public who would care to comment to come forward. Is there any? All right, I see none. So if that be the case, we're actually ready to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we adjourn our public hearing and reconvene a public meeting.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We're now back to our regular commission meeting, which would be appropriate at this time if we wish to take an action on H1.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
If you're ready to hear it.
I am.
I'll make the motion that we approve the amendments or the changes made to that document or the contract 2016-6 by adding the specific superseding reinvestment fee and development funded reserve account language.
Second?
Good, I have a motion in second. I want to thank Summit Group for working on this and being a good partner. This is very good, you know, we've been able to do this. It gives us confidence as a commission of not only your ability, but your desire to be a good corporate citizen. We thank you for that and we wish you good fortunes in the future. Very good, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, it's time for your comments at the end of the meeting. Care to say anything? Commissioner Forrester?
No, I think I'm good, thank you very much.
Commissioner Harvey?
Nope.
No?
Really?
That's the shortest comment you've made all day long.
No.
Yep.
We've had good meetings this morning and I agree with Commissioner Forrester earlier. It's good to work in this group. We get along well and we've got a wonderful county and good things happening. So we thank you all for being here today. And with that, I'd make, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. So move?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned, thank you.